Speeding to order.
Kind of haircut.
Good to you guys.
And Bailey.
Thank you.
And they didn't get a haircut. Tell us a little bit about what's going on at the Workforce Center, I understand.
That's the plan, Workforce Center in general. So, um, first off, thank you commissioners for letting us tell our story about workforce again. Um, it's one of the things that I think separates Fairfield County from other counties in Ohio is how much more focused we put on workforce. I like to say, um, we made workforce a priority before it was cool. That's what everybody's talking about now. And I remember when I first started going to economic development meetings and everybody said, workforce is somebody else's problem. And I'm like, well, it's gonna be up and down pretty soon, everybody. So, um, thank you for all your investment. When we look at. Hi, Tech. When we look at Bailey, she doesn't want to see my bald head, and I turn against her. I appreciate that, Dan. So, the, uh, we look at our workforce program and it's really three, um, three main focuses. Number one, we have our Area 20 Workforce Board, which Bailey's gonna, gonna speak to us about. Our Career Readiness Program, and then the Workforce Center. Uh, so the Workforce Board, I don't think we spent too much time talking about, so I wanted to, uh, let Bailey share what we're doing there. Uh, Bailey recently was promoted to our, uh, Workforce Development Specialist position when Adam Salaco left. Uh, we restructured her position. She's gonna have a employee underneath her, so she's gonna be a new supervisor. Thank you to JFS for letting us steal her from you guys. And, uh, been doing a great job along all the counties together, so.
Um, so as Rick mentioned, we, as the Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development Department, um, are also the administrators of the Area 20 Workforce Development Board. Um, so we are responsible for all the administrative oversight of the board that makes decisions in five counties, actually. Um, so that is Fairfield, Bigway, Ross, Hocking, and Vinton Counties. So the board is made up of 26 businesses, um, education providers, and community organizations. Um, and like I said, they partner with, um, Ohio means job centers in each of those five counties for the program delivery, um, of workforce programming. Specifically, WEOWA-funded workforce programming in those five counties. And I also want to add that we are the second-largest workforce area in terms of counties, um, in the state of Ohio. So there's a lot of moving pieces that we are responsible, um, for keeping track of. And just to give you a little taste of Fairfield County representation, we've listed our Fairfield County Board members. Um, we have Fairfield Medical Center, Midwest Fabricating, Eastland Fairfield, Claypool Electric, Lancaster City Schools, and Ohio University. And the way that that is determined is by population. So there's a formula, um, for each county, how many representatives they give. And because Fairfield County is the biggest county, um, in that five-county grouping, um, Fairfield County gets the largest representation. So in addition to keeping track of all of the administrative functions of the board, ensuring that we're in compliance with the federal government, the state government, writing policies for program delivery, um, providing technical assistance to our Ohio means job centers, we also do some special projects, um, with grant funding. Um, so this was a recent project that we worked on with Morpsy and Midwest Fabricating, which is a local employer. Um, they have two plants, one in Amanda and one in Lancaster. Um, so we've all heard it, that transportation is a huge barrier to employment for many folks in our county. Um, and that only gets worse as we go into our more southern counties. Public transportation, um, is a big issue in transportation in general. So with Morpsy, we, um, did a pilot program where folks that already work at Midwest Fabricating started a van pool program. So Morpsy did an analysis of all employees at Midwest and found that they had a lot of folks down in Gloucester, Ohio. So they started a van pool where they meet at a central location in Gloucester, and then car pool up to Midwest each day. So the hope now is that with this existing van pool, Midwest can use it as a recruiting tool where folks that don't have transportation, they can use this van pool as their transportation to work. So one, helping community members find employment, and two, helping a local employer, um, tap into a workforce that they otherwise would not be able to because of the transportation issue. And then we have a little video from the van pool. Today, we went to Amanda, Ohio, to talk to our van pool group at Midwest Fabricating. We asked the van pool group why they joined the program.
I joined the group to save money on gas, save the miles on my car.
Wear and tear on the vehicle saves a lot of miles on the vehicle.
And of course, not to drive all the time.
How has the program benefited your daily life so far?
Definitely saves me money and I don't have to drive no more.
It's easier and less time consumed.
I don't have to drive every day.
How does the program work for your group?
We meet up at our house or his house, since we live close together. And then we'll stop in Nelsonville to pick up our other rider.
We're the Go Ohio Commute Van Pool Group at Midwest.
So this has been very successful. They pretty well hired a few folks in that region, um, as a result of this van pool. And we're hoping to expand it to other communities within our workforce region.
Can you stop for a second about how it's funded?
So the state of Ohio ODJFS puts out Business Resource Network grants, um, each year with leftover WEOWA funding. Um, so we got that grant and we have been paying for it for the participants with that grant. And typically, um, with Morpsy, the employer and employee split the cost. Um, the van is rented through enterprise and there is a cost associated to it. But, um, we felt that it was important to get this off the ground, to show people that it was, you know, worth trying. Um, and Midwest has told us that their employees love it and are, are definitely willing to, uh, pay some money because it is a savings in the end when you're looking at gas money and, um, you know, the wear and tear on your vehicle. Another project that we've been working on with that same grant, um, are some marketing materials for our employer services. Um, so with WEOWA funding, we have workforce programs for community members, but we also have incentive programs for employers. Um, so employers can actually have training wages reimbursed, um, if they hire, you know, certain populations of people. And previous to this project, we really had no marketing materials. We would meet with a business, share the program with them, and leave them with our local policy, which was very full pages of just words that were very convoluted, hard to understand. Um, so we use this grant to hire a, a marketing firm to come up with, um, some literature for us that is very simple, easy to digest. We can actually leave it with the employer, so, you know, they have time to look over it. Uh, and we think this will really increase our business participation in those programs. And then last but not least, on the Area 20 side of things, we also have a youth employment program. So this is for 16 to 24-year-olds in the region, um, that are facing significant barriers to employment. So the state puts out guidelines of what that means. Um, we're talking, you know, didn't finish high school, homelessness, things like that. So we have youth providers in each of our five counties that do the, the program delivery. Um, and previous to this, the program was called CCMEP, which stands for Conference of Case Management Employment Program. That is a mouthful. Um, it's hard to get excited about that as a staff person to the board. It's even harder for youth to get excited about that name. Um, so we did an area-wide rebrand to next step. The other issue that we had was county to county within the area, the, the program was named something different. So if a participant went to Vinton County, they were being, you know, presented a program that was named differently than in Fairfield County. Um, so we wanted to fix that and we did so with this, this rebrand. And thank you to Fairfield County JFS and Donna Stalter. She, uh, put this logo together for us. So we're really excited about this and we're, we're doing some, um, major, you know, improvements to our, our youth program. And we think we'll be able to reach a lot more, um, youth in that 16 to 24 age range.
That's a job, like. You know, and things like the van pool, these are things that we try to customize, you know, solutions for our employers. Like right now, we have a manufacturer that has 50 Haitian refugees that is working for them. And they reached out, they wanted, uh, do ESL, English classes for them, asking if we could provide a workforce center for that, helping them find instructors. So we reached out to our education partners. So that's just another example of how we try to help our employers on the workforce side. Our Career Readiness Program, uh, is funded through the Fairfield 33 Alliance and the local schools. Uh, we have four career navigators, uh, that are officially, uh, EFC employees. Uh, and then they go out and they work with our students that are seniors that don't necessarily have a plan on their next step. So, uh, we got one that spends all their time in Pickerington Schools. We have one that spends all their time in Lancaster Schools, all the way down to elementary school with building career readiness programs for them. And then we have one that rotates all of the other, uh, county schools. And then Carrie Stone, you met before, she's full-time at Workforce Center. She works with all of those students and, uh, also works with our businesses and building those relationships. We have 70 business partners in our Career Readiness Program now, and a lot of that is thanks to Carrie and her work. Uh, the Workforce Center, uh, we just graduated 81 students. So I said 83 at the time, we lost two. Uh, but as you can see, electrical still is the most popular out of those programs. Uh, but this is the cool thing. Um, the bobby mean we're gonna remove because a lot of those students go to college and, um, it's kind of difficult to track them, although Fairfield Medical Center did just hire one of our bobby mean students to be a bobby for them, so we just found that out. But out of the other students, 51 of them are fully employed right now in the industry that they study. So 51 of the 64, uh, some are going to college, others are applying for jobs. They didn't stay on with their employer for either their choice or the employer's choice. Electrical, those 23, all 23 are employed, asked to be electricians, all 23 of them. So Claypool Electric, they are instructing for us this year, uh, on behalf of Hocking College. And, uh, they've done an amazing job with it, as every student's.
I think we should show the video.
All right, let's show the video.
I'd like to show it.
But this is a video that Lancaster Schools put together.
I chose the Workforce Center because I was tired of my fast food job and I didn't want to work there anymore. Um, plus I was already in the construction program, doing, um, stuff with Mr. Phillips and Mr. Lou.
Why did you choose the Workforce Center?
I chose the Workforce Center because I knew I wanted to, uh, not go to college after school and I wanted to work with my hands. So I ended up going here because I knew there were a lot of options.
What does a typical day at the Workforce Center look like?
Um, so you get here, um, right around eight, so a little la- later than regular school. But, um, we'll get started right in the lab, if it's a lab week, or we'll have bookwork. Um, but it's really just all, uh, like for me, it's electrical themed. So, um, just really hammering on that, so.
Why did you choose the Workforce Center?
Uh, I didn't want to go to college and a teacher at the Lancaster High School that motivated me to go.
Why would you recommend the Workforce Center?
Um, it really helped me steer in a direction that I didn't know. Cause I mean, I had a lot of ideas of what I could have done and this was not in any of the ideas of what I wanted to do. Um, so it's a lot different. Um, I would say the reason to come here is if you're somebody who doesn't want to sit behind a desk all day and you're somebody who wants to learn something and get out there, it's a really good experience for that. Cause then you're set up for after high school. I haven't done any job looking or anything, so I'm kind of set up.
What is a typical day for you when you go to work?
Typical day for me, we pull water from the ground, we treat it, put chemicals in it, and then we send it out to, to homes for them to use.
Why would you recommend the Workforce Center?
I would recommend the Workforce Center because it is an easy way to get into a lifetime career.
After graduation, I plan to stay with the same company I'm with, become a master carpenter, and continue my own business.
Well, I plan to work hopefully at the company I'm already at. Um, if not, I'll find another job. But either way, uh, I'm just gonna work, go into a trade, work my way up.
High school wasn't my thing. I didn't think college would be either. So this is a great opportunity to get a job right out of high school and start your life off without no college debt.
Uh, when you get here, about eight o'clock, uh, you do your schoolwork from about eight to nine. After that, you either do work for here, like for your, uh, apprenticeship stuff, or your certifications, or you go out to the lab, which is right behind me, and do all these, do all the work you can do in there. Uh, basically anything carpentry related, and we'll learn it.
I recommend you go to the Workforce Center because you can get a job in high school, uh, start part-time, work one week on, one week off, and then once you graduate, you have a possibility that the company you worked for will offer you a full-time job. You also get a lot of experience here.
That was created by students, so, um, all of that stuff is thanks to the investment and time that the Fairfield County Commissioners have made in this, so, um, that shows the difference.
President, if I might, what, what's the, um, distribution methodology for that video to prospective students who might?
We'll be showing, so we just, that video was just made, so we'll be showing that. So we have, we've got students come through juniors that have done tours, uh, ended their junior year to see what we do here. Then at the beginning of next year, in August, we'll do a, uh, open house presentation thing, parents and students to come in and see. We'll show them that, you know, Lancaster Schools shares that video and we need to get the permission from them to be able to share it. Or what?
That graduating, if I might, that graduating class of 81 was the second, third, fourth. How many graduating classes have we had?
Those are third.
Third. And the capacity for that is not, we're, we're not nearing that capacity, or we are?
Yeah, so part of the issue is distribution of programs. So electric was at capacity, uh, bobby mean was at capacity. Uh, both of those were, uh, few students didn't finish, so we're gonna cut it overbook for next year. Uh, but, uh, we can get about 120, 125. So we have room to grow. Uh, we had six of the eight school districts in this year. Uh, the other two we're in, they just didn't get anybody that wanted to. So, um, ultimately, we will run into some capacity issues. Uh, but one of the things that we've done is we do one week on, one week off, which allows us to expand our capacity. So, you know, one student's working, one of ours is working, everyone's in the lab, and then vice versa. So a little different than regular school classes, you can't have 20-some students in the lab at one time because that are safety issues. We, we will be getting there. Uh, we will need to start to, we haven't had to turn anybody away from their program yet, uh, but we may get to that, that point. Uh, this is the first year where we actually didn't just accept everybody. Um, in the past, we had students that were, so were already done on the regular schoolwork. They came and they just weren't successful at workforce center because they still had to do all their other schoolwork on top of this. So they need to be caught up with their high school credits to be able to come here. Because if not, they just won't be successful. And we don't want that to, you know, we want every student to get a job. We want to make sure they're in that place, so.
President, could I ask one more question? So in discussions with different people, I've heard in various ways, I've heard that we are the only county doing this, and I've heard that we are, uh, one of a handful of counties doing this.
So Perry County is starting a workforce center, uh, it'll be open in a couple of years. That's tied directly to New Lexington High School, so that's a little difference. Um, Island County is building a workforce center. There are other workforce centers out there that nothing that serves all the schools like this. They tend to be either school dependent or they're in the works. And as far as I know, we're the only one that's serving entirely.
Thank you.
So, so Rick, you know, uh, it's kind of interesting, your presentation of, you know, you know, I was involved as a board member for years till they reconfigured how that board structure looked. And I used to attend a lot of those meetings, I thought, frankly, it was a waste of time. And I think it's come to a point now where they, they're actually becoming relevant to the world, to the real.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're up to 26 board members. We have no bargaining forum anymore. Uh, we had people, we had a board member lead here. Bailey and I were at a, uh, job fair down in, uh, Chillicothe a few weeks ago. And there was one of our former board members that had left company, left his company, so he left the board. And he was like, hey, how can I get back on the board? I really want to get back on the board. And I'm like, that wasn't the case before, it was like, okay, do I have to come?
Yeah, I also think it's just in the workforce landscape that we're in right now. Businesses definitely realize that they have to be engaged in workforce, you know, initiatives in order to be competitive. So I think.
Sometimes they would be talking about some federal work program or this or that that really had nothing to do with relevant, so, you know, job skills, faculty job skills.
Yeah, we strip that stuff out. We do that still, but we do that all behind the scenes and don't, uh, burden some of the board with that.
I'm really happy to see its transition.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we've done, Bailey and Angel both done a great job, uh, going through this. There's a lot to it, uh, you know, a lot of fiscal digs and other things that, you know, you and I don't necessarily see on a day-to-day basis, but it allows us to do the great work that we do.
And thanks to Rick, to, to start to turn a corner back when you became involved.
And I want to thank Dr. Brown for, uh, for saying, let's move that from us counting to here.
If you travel out with Rick, Rick.
Um, for better or worse. I will say the one thing you learned from that video the most is, uh, wastewater Tony, it's clearly a lot easier than you make it happen.
Why you can only get five?
Uh, we are on from summer camps. Uh, go to Fairfield County Workforce College, we don't need junior high students. We are struggling with attendance this year. Uh, we had 200 last year, we're just over 100 this year. We started our first camps this week, we have 18 students in two of the camps. Um, you know, we have, we've expanded the number of instructors and this is, talk about collaboration. Our summer camps now include, uh, instructors from Lancaster Schools, a lot of instructors from Lancaster Schools, an instructor from Pickerington, an instructor from Eastland Fairfield, and interns at Ohio University's Engineering Program from Athens who are coming up here to help with this. Uh, and Community Action has also sent some helpers. So this has truly been very collaborative. So the goal of this is to get these junior high students excited about the trades that we have at the Workforce Center, which manufacturing, healthcare, construction, that's our future, that's our now. And we need to get the students excited about that. Um, moving forward, better, um, so one of our goals over the next few years is more adult programming. Right now, we're gonna, uh, launch an adult bobby program that OU can, um, is gonna do. OU has their engineering tech programs there, uh, and there's an ATRAC program with Hocking College. We want to see more of that, so we are pushing our partners to, to do more of those. Our discovery days, uh, will start this fall. That's where students come in and learn a little bit about each industry and then pick whether they want to continue on or not. We had about half of the students that came last year chose to come to the Workforce Center, which is a pretty good number when I talk to our friends in career tech world. And we're also, uh, this is gonna happen, uh, we're gonna do a 5G program with Eastland Fairfield. Uh, there's funding out there, so we've got all this money for broadband, but not people to lay the fiber. So, uh, Eastland Fairfield is going to be running a program for that. It'll basically be, there's lots of funding streams, it'll be free, uh, for any student that wants to do this. Uh, so that's a, a great opportunity and a great partnership, and we'll be going that way.
Sure, sure, great work. Partnership we have with Eastland Fairfield. It's, it's a long time coming and you make the progress.
It's all about people and, um, we have leadership change and we have a wonderful collaborative leadership. Um, so, uh, this is also another cool thing, is our engineering tech lab expansion. Uh, so I'll just show you real quick. Uh, this is, if you want to scroll around, these boxes will be machinery and equipment. Uh, so it's gonna have a lower ceiling, it's gonna take about a third of that back area. We'll have garage doors to call, still have an open light, uh, view, go to the other one. And then this is what the view will look like from the actual floor, so, um, so as you're walking back to the back of the Workforce Center, uh, this is for future expansion, but there'll be garages, windows, plenty of things, so you can keep it open. People can see what they're doing in there, but we'll also keep dust out while this expensive machinery and equipment, uh, it'll keep the sound down, um, and it'll, uh, really be able to showcase what, you know, engineering technology and future manufacturing looks like, not just out in the warehouse. Um, so if you want to go back to the, uh, well, two classrooms, those are pretty cool with it. But if you want to go back to the, uh, blueprints, slide. Um, so right here is where the, uh, relax hut is, that's gonna extend further back. All of this will be enclosed and we'll have the equipment now that, uh, OU has. OU's offices will be here now at the back by their students. We'll have two classrooms with a divider, so it could become, um, one large classroom that can have 50 students. And then in the back is gonna be the new semiconductor, uh, lab. So there's a vacuum lab, a, a clean room, not the full-blown clean room, but a simulated clean room, um, that will allow students to get a one-year semiconductor certificate to get a job with Intel. So that program's already been approved by Intel. Um, now we just need to pull this out. And I can't thank John enough for all of his help in this and we're still getting requests for changes from OU as we go through this, uh, cause everything, you know, is fluid when it comes to engineering technology right now. Intel, so.
Fluid is the word.
Fluid. Um, and then moving forward, uh, we will have an STNA program there. Uh, we got grant money through, uh, the Fairfield County Foundation, Hocking College did. Uh, so starting, the goal is in January, we will offer an STNA program. Uh, we got money through the state, uh, for respiratory therapy programs. So OU will launch its first respiratory therapy program in, at the Workforce Center. They'll also have it at all of their other regional campuses. So number one requested, uh, job by our, uh, hospitals. Every hospital we ask respiratory therapists, we need respiratory therapists. Uh, this picture is what the respiratory therapy lab looks like in Central College in Dayton. It's one of the best respiratory therapy programs around. John and I, OU went and visited there a couple of weeks ago. This is the kind of stuff that you'll be seeing at the Workforce Center, uh, that kind of equipment. So that's gonna be pretty cool. Our driver's ed program, Hocking College was doing that, uh, that person left. So we are basically working with ESC to bring that in-house. So we will have driver's ed in there, but we'll have a lot more control over that. Uh, CDL, we're hoping to be able to get some funds to, uh, build a lot at the airport. So we can have dedicated CDL lot because right now can't have CDL training on a regular basis because we need a parking lot. Uh, and then this is another new thing, uh, tower program. So with that 5G, the next level would be like cell phone towers and things like that. Hocking College has a tower, but they've never put it up, never set up a program down there. They'd like to do that at the Workforce Center. So we're working with John what that could look like, where we'll have a, which I think would be really cool just from an advertising standpoint, having a big tower out in the Workforce Center to, to show people this is what we do.
How much, uh, how much do you need to get the CDL program on to?
Um, I'd say about 300,000. But we have requests from the state, uh, through the budget. So if that doesn't happen, then you might see.
And, and we'll be with Senator Chafe tomorrow night, didn't do that discussion.
Oh, good, thank you, appreciate that. I appreciate all you offered in the same ones.
So Rick, can I ask him the question?
Just a second.
As you, well, no, huge fan of this program. We're aware of many of the, the fantastic success stories for, for some of those young people. Um, I don't know if we're free revenue, or we're growth, or we're value, or how you would characterize what we're trying to do here. But at some point on the horizon, what would be the, the, the metric that one would use to evaluate the, the success? I don't want to necessarily put it in terms of ROI, but I, any endeavor must have some metric by which it's judged. What metric would you propose to, to utilize for judging this, this effort?
Taking the finances out, and I would look at placing it in the jobs as the metric. How many into jobs in these individual careers? Uh, if you look at the financial part of it, I would say cost per job. So how much does it cost to place each one of these individuals into a career? So for example, on the WEOWA side, uh, we spend up to $10,000 or $9,500 for programming and training to get somebody employed. Um, you know, we're below that, we're a lot further below that at the Workforce Center. So I feel from an investment standpoint, it's paying off. Uh, we've been providing the grants through WEOWA, uh, and now we've got the state money that's coming in to help cover the next year. Uh, the, the schools are breaking even at best, you know, they're not, they're really looking at this as a loss to them. How do we start to build this up for the future? How does Hocking College start to get into the plum split? How does OU start to get into the plum split? So for example, uh, I'm the president of the Ohio Building Exchange, which are retreaters who are down in, at the Hocking, uh, the Hocking Hills State Park Lodge. And we're gonna have somebody from OU come in to speak about OU and engineering and, you know, their relevance, which frankly, on this, it's all Ohio State, quality state. So it's bringing, that's, that's the value that there's so many, you know, this. Columbus is, my favorite district in Ohio will be for the next several years. These colleges want to be a. These colleges want to be a part of Columbus, Columbus State, and Fairfield County.
Another question is to comment, I mean, I'm hopeful that the data exists as being collated and assembled and kept and tracked and that at some point, not today, but at some point in the future, I would be interested in more of a data-driven analysis. That's not to denigrate today's presentation, I'm just saying at some point, tracking that success by a metric that I'm happy to have you define, right? And so that year to year to year, on an apples-to-apples basis, the metrics and the projects can be evaluated on some basis that people could understand. And again, I don't want any of that to be construed in any negative way, because I think this is an incredibly important, wonderful thing that we're doing. I just think that at some point on the horizon, somebody could rightfully ask, at what price?
Just continue to be really impressed by the progress, you know, if you think about five years ago, six years ago, I started here at this building, and now we've got life to it and a program and kids getting jobs and all the stuff that we hoped for back then is now, it's had to come to fruition, so really outstanding job to you and your team. It's, we are ahead of the rest of the state, it's a big deal.
Well, an interesting thing, so for H-Track, we had so many students in H-Track that we didn't have enough jobs within Hocking County, so we had to reach out and a lot of carpenters had started a H-Track program in Columbus and ended up hiring nine of our students because we couldn't find enough jobs for the community. It's $20 now, start.
Oh, I didn't know if that was the last slide, okay.
Thank you.
And I do think it might be good timing to share the latest Commission Connection video, but he just stepped out, so maybe we'll circle back to that because it is driver's ed.
You seen it.
Yeah, sure. All of that touch.
Good morning, folks. I'm Fairfield County Commissioner Steve Davis, throwing a video here today. As we know, occasionally when we do Commission Connection videos, we try to tell you about something that's going on with the county officials' office. And what we've been looking at for a few years now is impediments to trend and what are the reasons why people are having trouble getting from point A to point B and accomplishing their goals? And during that process, something came to my attention which is, I didn't know and I was really shocked by, but I remember back when I was a kid, I'm six years old, back when I was a kid, everybody wanted their license as soon as they could get it, and they wanted that first car, even if like me, it was a 1967 GMC truck with rust all over the place, it cost me $325, but I couldn't wait to get out there and get on the road. And what I learned and some of the research we've been doing is the percentage of, you know, children 16 and 19 years old that are even getting their licenses is just plummeting. And then I learned that none of the schools in Fairfield County were providing driver's ed anymore. And the private sector was trying to fill that gap, but the lines are low, the wait times are long, and the price is high. And so I don't know if that's why people in that age range aren't getting their driver's license the way they used to. But when Lancaster City Schools and Fairfield Union called and said, hey, we kind of like to restart driver's ed, can you help us out? By buying cars, for example, I think it took my office maybe 10 or 15 minutes to say heck yes to that idea. So we're excited about this and thought I turned over Nathan Hill's for a minute Superintendent Lancaster City Schools, the county news, tell a lot of those who've been really involved in this process.
Thanks Commissioner Davis, we appreciate it and appreciate the support of the commissioners and Fairfield County in getting this program started, but I'd be remiss by saying I have much to do with the program. I have Steve Spangler, Director of Secondary Education, and Molly DeTamaso, and one of our teachers here at Lancaster High School, who's the coordinator of the program, so I'm going to let Steve talk about the program itself and Molly talk about how well it's going so far.
Driver's education certainly has been an obstacle and a barrier to many of our students. As you know, Lancaster High School's focused on creating college and career-ready students, and as we sat down with students and families and tried to directly hand them off to employers or industry, the major obstacle was they didn't have a way to get to work. They had not pursued driver's education and that along with societal issues and COVID had backlogged driver's ed, created high costs, and it was just something that was certainly a need for us. So we were able to partner with Muskingham Ohio Valley ESC to be a satellite for their driver's education school, and with the support of the county commissioners and the quick turnaround on being able to support getting us that vehicle, we are now up and running. So phase one of our program is ready to roll, we have students that are enrolled and participating. The next phase will begin in August, and that is when we will be able to implement scholarships for students. We recently selected one of 35 school districts in Ohio to receive $37,000 from the governor's office and drive to succeed grant funds, so we'll be able to scholarship 100 students next year who are economically in need to get them free driver's education, so another barrier down.
We've been in operation for just over two months, and we already have over 20 students who are part of the program. Many of them have started their online course, which is the first starts, and some are even in their in-car sessions and driving, and we already have a few who finished. The best part is that we currently do not have a waiting list, whereas most private entities have a four to six month waiting list right now, so it's been a great opportunity for our students to get in the car, to get driving, and to be able to get their license right away. It's very simple to start, all students need to do is obtain their permit first, they complete their registration paperwork, they pick up right in the office, which makes it easy for them, and they deliver it to me, and from there, I get them started. And parents can pay in an online form, which is often made it really easy for families.
We're also able to be helpful to Fairfield Union, and I know Superintendent Chad Belleville would have liked to have been with us, but I understand he had a few words to share anyway.
We feel like that bringing driver's education back to Fairfield Union was critical to help our students find success after high school. One of the biggest challenges for students who are specifically students going into the job market is having a driver's license, to be able to get to the work site. So we identified several years ago that this was a project we really needed to focus on and a program that we needed to bring back to our district. The response from our community in regards to the program has been tremendous. We are just blessed beyond words that we have a supportive community and being able to bring a program like this to Fairfield Union really is a game changer for a lot of our families. We're extremely blessed and lucky that, you know, this is what a real partnership looks like. Whenever government and schools come together to try to help create programs that can reach the masses and provide services for the community, it's a great thing to witness. Commissioner Levy, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Fix really stepped up to the plate. We're very thankful to our county commissioners for stepping up and making that a possibility. And then our final partner in establishing our program, Lancaster City Schools Superintendent Nathan Hill, Steve Spangler, Lancaster City Schools, those guys were just instrumental in helping us build this program. Lancaster City Schools and Fairfield Union have partnered throughout this process, and they're lending some of their instructors to us to help get our students through the program as quickly as possible. So again, going back to that key element of partnership to bring programs to our community is just vital for our success.
This program goes through the whole summer, so if you know somebody that might be interested in taking advantage of this opportunity, please share a word. I think this video will have an opportunity for you to see how to do that. More importantly, and as always, very thankful to be your Fairfield County Commissioner.
So if anybody watches that video, please give him a thumbs up.
Or you can comment on how horribly I dress or, you know, whatever you want to do.
Can people do that? Yes. Any other questions or comments before we move on?
I'll get staffed.
So we, we're now at public comment, if you would wish to get public comment, please approach the podium and give your name and address, and it is limited to three minutes.
It's good to be here today. I didn't make it last week, as you know, but my concern is that now the left or the powers that seem to be upsetting this nation are striking out against Christianity, and this is the problem that we're facing today. Morality seems to be going under, and we need to look to moral people to be our leaders. And this is what we need, even in this community here. And it's good to see a lot of people around this room that had a moral grounding in their life. So with that thought, I would like to go to prayer this morning. Lord, the leaders of this county are before us right here today, and we know they're just a portion of the people that lead in this county, but each one of us has a responsibility to be the best person that we can be. And we look to our God and the morality that our forefathers had in guiding and directing this nation, in writing a constitution that's based on the Bible, and this needs to be held before us, and we need to look to the Bible for directions each and every day. We need to be looking to those people that follow this guide, and we need to be aware that without God, it cannot happen for very long. And we pray that you'll be with people leading this nation, but most of all, we want good leaders here locally, and we want them to be truthful and upfront with everything they do, and we pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Who would like to be next, please?
Cherry Pimer, 3464 South, thank you. Wasn't going to speak today, but I received a return email. This is about solar, of course. There were a lot of questions I had for PJM because I couldn't find the answers. And there are two project numbers that they both say Eastern Cotton Tail. One of them, of course, the information sessions with, I think at least two of you were there maybe last week on the 29th, and it showed the boundaries of the project area, even though they have leased almost 800 additional acres. And I did question them about that, asking if they were going to release that, those properties, and the head guy for the project said, oh, well, eventually, because they need laydown areas and parking spaces for equipment, all that. Okay, but there's a second project number, and the project that they have the boundary drawn out now on their map is approximately 1,550 acres, and that's AE2048, okay? But I've been tracking on PJM, there's another project number, it's AE2136, and it says Eastern Cotton Tail. And the first project is 220 megawatts, okay, which we've known about for a long time. The second one is 114 megawatts, and I'm trying to find out where is that? Because it's going to interconnect also through AE2048. But I received, might give me a little bit more time, wait, the email from PJM response, and I looked at that this morning, so I snapped it here. It says, because I was questioning the project numbers and all that, and it says that, for example, AE2048 and AE2136 are both named Muskingham West Millersport, because I was questioning the name on the reports, because it doesn't give the solar project name, are both named Muskingham West Millersport 345. Okay, this name reflects where these projects would interconnect to the transmission system between the two substations. It is two projects, one for 220 megawatts and one for 114 megawatts, that will both interconnect at the same point. On the 29th, during the information session, no one from EVDF could tell me about that second project of 114 megawatts. We cannot trust what they say.
Please go, please.
Okay, trying here. 220 megawatts is what they keep telling us. Where's the other 114? They haven't been able to tell us, and somehow I'm going to find out, because I keep digging, that's what I do in the middle of the night when I can't sleep. So anyway, this response was from the senior lead client manager at PJM.
Yeah, please.
That was it.
Would you be next? But thank you for coming. Morning. Nothing new to state commissioners.
So we have some renderings that I think that it's going to pop up there, but we are circling back to the conversation regarding the perimeter fencing at the sheriff's office and the jail. John was able to refresh quotes that we had received, and we do have three options. And the option you're seeing right there is half, half fencing with the basinry wall, so 44-inch basinry wall, three foot black fence on top, that option is $965,000. The full six-foot height wall is $995,000, and John did put together a drawing which would represent just the black fencing there to get an idea. That option there for a six-foot black fence is $409,500. So definitely a difference in pricing between the ones that have the basinry wall, and that is primarily due to, you know, the piers that are built there for the basinry wall that makes up both of the primary cost of both the half and the full wall.
First of all, I just, I think people should understand the reason for this discussion, it's not aesthetics or because we want to spend money. The sheriff's office, Sheriff Lake, came to the commissioners with security concerns about the officers and employees who park in that lot, and some of the experiences they've had with vandalism and other problems. And so they asked for a more secure environment for law enforcement officers in that area. That's the premise of the discussion. Initially, my thought was that I had a strong preference for either the full brick wall or the half and half with brick and then fencing up from there, even though I was aware that that was a much more expensive approach to this. The reason I thought that was appropriate was because I thought it had better aesthetics to go with the $35 million jail center itself. However, I have had a couple of conversations, most recently this morning, with Sheriff Lake, and there's actually a preference for the fencing that you see there now from the sheriff, because they think it would be better for the folks inside the fence who were trying to protect to be able to see through, and for And for folks on the outside not to have places that they can kind of obscure view of themselves in. So with that, Mr. President, I'm changing my position from my preference for the more aesthetically pleasing approach to the less expensive, more secure approach in the eyes of the sheriff, who is certainly in a better position than I am to comment or qualify security issues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, yeah.
So do all these quotes include the gates or is that separate?
Yeah, actually, the majority calls to the gate. We know that access to the control gates was zero five, because this does include two vehicle gates in what we call, you know, the JFS side of the parking area. For JFS employees.
Yeah, based on what Steve just said, I'm good with this. Question your art skills, but you know.
Hey, that was on the fly.
I'm in this front end shop this morning.
So, you know, yeah, just, I'm just, I'm just, to get the job done and say, I think it's the best of both of things.
So what do you need from us today?
We will, with this information, move forward with this particular option that was up there, just the black fencing and get that, communicate with the sheriff's office about scheduling, things like that. It already is in the capital.
It's planned in the capital. It's.
At what price? Yeah, no, that's fine. And then another question from my Mr. President is, is this a sole source situation or do we need to go out for bid or what's that?
Offer purchasing balls, which we've used for the roof here and some other projects.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Timeline, John, do you think now with the big.
Actually, the fence subcontractor was local. So we anticipate this could turn around quick. The gates might be the thing that are small delays, but I'll get an update.
And make sure you just communicate with the sheriff's office. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Appreciate that. Capital budget is on track for late June enactment. As we all know, the House did vote on their portion of the capital bill in early spring, but the Senate did not. And they now intend to vote on the measure by June 26. So, and this is coming after extensive review of over 4,400 requests. So hopefully we'll have some good news. One of the major projects we have waiting there that was already approved by the House would be for the purchase of Collinade. So we're hearing good things about that, but would like to get that over the finish line.
Question from my Mr. President. In the contract on the purchase agreement for Collinade, I know there were contingencies, one of which was approval of the funding in the capital budget at at least $600,000. I know it's more than that right now. But let's just say, for purpose of discussion, that there's passage on June 26. And let's say that the governor doesn't line out a veto anything and it goes on to the governor and takes effect 30 days later or something like that. Do we have any problems with the contingency timeline within the purchase contract?
Yeah, I keep them updated. I did share this information with them as well. You know, if it does look like there's any timing things, I'm sure we would be able to sort that out. But right now, no, there's no hint of that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
ODOT grant for Transportation Improvement District. Jeremiah did share that the TIP was awarded $370,000 from the Department of Transportation for the Basel Western Road Improvement Project. Jeremiah, you want to add to that? That was good news.
It was really good news. And it was, it took a little bit of time and strength bullying to end up getting that. The grant's based on the number of jobs that are signed on the line and being awarded or created in the area. And we had received a smaller grant prior to that that was based on the same criteria. They liked our project enough, our presentation enough, that they actually let us rescind the smaller grant and receive the bigger grant in its place.
Great work on that. Thank you, Jeremiah. All right, highlights of resolutions. The review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals. And we have 13 resolutions on the agenda for the regular voting meeting. There is a resolution appointing Aaron Kennedy, who is our transit director, to the Ohio Transportation Risk Full Board, and then appointing Jeff Porter as the alternate. And I believe there's an upcoming meeting for that. Is that correct, Joe?
June 13.
We also have a resolution authorizing appropriation at 833,000 for the Airport Hangar Capital Projects Fund. John had did a presentation, completed a presentation a couple of meetings ago. We are moving forward to be able to fund all of the hangars and not make any reduction there. John, anything else to add there?
Really excited to get started. I think everybody at the airport's excited, interested in here.
Wonderful. But thank you for your leadership on that. We also have a resolution authorizing establishment of a new fund for public transit. And there are three resolutions for economic and workforce development regarding tax increment financing. One is to authorize an engagement letter for Bricker Graden to provide counsel for the TIP. And two other resolutions to authorize engagement letters with Bricker and Graden. Argus Growth Consultants for consulting services to the DHL and Med Vet sites on Basel Western.
Yeah, so as we're starting to, in the new world of TIPS and other incentives that the county has never really driven, and from the county standpoint, it's usually the municipalities that are doing it. This is new to us, so Bricker Graden. It's every day, so relying on their expertise. Thank you to Auditor's Office and prosecutors for.
Perfect. Thank you. I should have combined this with the talk about the airport, but we are authorizing the bid award to settle in construction for the hangars at the airport. There we go. Resolution authorizing a change order with gut neck construction for the engineering lab at the workforce. Notice we said fluid was the word relating to that project, so that's one there. And then three resolutions from RPC regarding the community development block grant program. The first is to award the bid to Nash Builders for the Village of Pleasantville Ball Field Improvements. The second is to award the contract to Cooper Contract Concrete Services for pool improvements in the Village of Pleasantville. And the last resolution, you may recall from a couple of weeks ago, the resolution was pulled then from the agenda. And now it's back on spires, paving is ready to move forward. And this resolution is to approve the bid award to them for the Pleasantville Pick and Looper Street Improvement Project. Our budget review.
Yeah, a few weeks ago, auditor round, the act for cash balance numbers. The Commissioner of Finance Department continues, says to, since 2021, to report on the general fund cash balance based on pool cash and the conferences. As reported in the year presentation in February, the 2023 cash ending balance was at $39.3 million. And I will be updating the 2024 forecast within the next month with May actuals today and forecast the rest of the year.
Michelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Thank you. The workforce career, workforce centers signing day is this Thursday, June 6th at 2:00 PM. The commissioners received the following correspondence. Thank you emails regarding the passing of exclusionary zones for industrial solar and additional correspondence regarding industrial solar projects from the Office of the County Auditor or May 29th press release titled "Purpo County Auditor to Host Call Center for Property Tax Questions", "A Memo Regarding Testimony for Property Tax Reform", "GIS Interns Board of Revision Update", "And Dates of Interest", "The County Auditor's Association of Ohio Property Tax Flyer", "A Homestead Program Proposal", "The Auditor's Wins of the Weeks", "The Map of the Month for June", "And the Auditor's Ledger News from the County Auditor's Office". Also included in the commissioner's packet is the Purpo County E-News Updates Newsletter for May. That is it.
Thank you, Michelle. Good talk, Michelle.
Commissioner Davis, any old business?
Yeah, under old business, a couple of things if I might. One, I think I know the answer to the 114 question that Sherry had asked earlier. But I'm not going to get out in front of my skis on that right now. I will confirm whether I do in fact know the answer on that. But we'll get that sorted. The other issue I wanted to mention, I placed a call this morning to Senator Matt Dolan. He and I communicate once in a while and I'm confident in a return call on this issue. But I think we should all be kind of keeping one eye on Senate Bill 275, which he is intending to introduce, if he hasn't already. And I don't really fully understand some of the language choices and the description that I've read about Senate Bill 275. But one of them involves a change in Ohio's energy system from what's called transmission to distributive energy. I don't know what that means. Apparently it means more energy somehow. But I need to learn more about that. I've got actually call into both Senator Dolan and a subject matter expert on that issue, so make sure I understand it. But one component of, apparently one component of Senate Bill 275 would be a statewide prohibition on the use of agricultural lands for generation of energy from any source. And a request or demand or law in the state that would mandate the generation of any form of energy be cited only on areas that are in some definition of distress. And I don't know what that means either. I do, but I don't. And so anyway, I just, I don't know that that Senate bill would have an impact on existing projects. I don't know that, probably not. But, and I know there are hundreds of bills in the House and in the Senate. You know, probably some large percentage of them don't end up actually meaning anything. But the reason I mentioned this one is when Senator Dolan puts his name on a bill, it has a little different feel than when John Doe puts their name on a bill. So I'll be researching that and trying to understand first what it means, because I don't know all of that right now. But I would just encourage folks who are interested in energy, for whatever reason, to maybe keep a side eye on Senate Bill 275. Thank you, Mr. President.
Just to support that, there was a great op-ed piece in this weekend's newspaper that you wrote that kind of described all that. It was in yesterday's dispatch, if anybody wants to pick up on that. Really well done by him. The only old business I have, I just wanted to give a shout out to Liberty Union Softball Team, who won the state championship this past weekend. It's a big deal. Anytime a school from Fairfield County is best in the state in anything. So we want to recognize them more formally sometime down the road, but just wanted to give them a shout out. It's a big deal.
You have any new business?
I have no new business. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
I have a new business kind of a question. I heard, and I can't even remember where I heard it. But as some folks may know, the Art Walk had like three times the number of potential exhibitors as they had space for exhibitions. And then I heard, and again, I wish I knew where I even heard it, that Double Edge was doing a kind of a special thing out on their patio for exhibitors, you know, the other two thirds that the Art Walk didn't have room for, that they were doing something a little special there to give some of those folks an opportunity to share some of their art. And I just, I guess I wondered, I'm kind of looking at Ani a little bit, wondering if you had heard that too, or if that's just a. Would you, I'm curious about that, because I am aware of a number of artists that I would appreciate that, you know, they just didn't have room for. And that might be a neat opportunity. And if that's true, if my rumor's true, I'll be at Double Edge.
Well, you can always pop next door to the Record Center, because we'd be hosting art affairs.
I'll be at Double Edge.
So.
It's kind of tough to follow that. We are in the process of approving the tax bills, the plans to go into production here very shortly, and to mail them on Flag Day, which happens to be June 14th. That's it.
Yeah, great. So Rick, the career signing day, Thursday, right?
Yes.
So how many do you anticipate being there?
Students, we have 25, maybe.
Okay, I remember the first one we did downtown here, we had four.
We were excited for that.
Yeah, we were. It's a big deal, dude. Good job.
So I plan on being there, so.
Me too. Jeremiah?
Well, we are still moving forward as we talked about a minute ago with Basel Western. Talked about that grant that came in. Same thing with Refuge Road. We've got construction going on right now on the second phase of that project. My plans moving forward for a bike and pedestrian path. The additions to a lot of the intersections, whatnot on Refuge is continuing to be forward with that. We're trying to catch up and keep caught up with mowing grass. The first round is always kind of difficult for us. Got to guys focused on that stuff. We improved our oxygen spraying program, trying to do a better job of that. So those are some of the summertime things.
Yeah, I thought about you the other day that were out mowing in the rain. Dr. Brown?
Following up on the report last week about the unassigned cash balance, which is a key indicator for the state auditor, we have filed our basic financial statements with the state auditor. So we're a little bit ahead of that. But now we're proceeding with the full formal report of the annual comprehensive financial report. Looking at the five months of this year that have closed, sales taxes slightly lower than receipts, but conveyance fees, property taxes, casino revenues, as well as interest income are all ahead. That's about 75% of total general fund. So it's in a good place. And that's even with Homestead and Rollback having not yet been distributed by the state. They, the state, had to go to get additional appropriations to finish up their distribution of Homestead and Rollback. And that's about 800,000 for the general fund and a half. So that's a significant difference. So overall, at about the 46.6%, of the estimated 63.9 million that we have estimated right now, we're right on track to those particular revenues. Also, thinking about last week, we talked a little bit about Homestead and the Homestead program and the request for those to be approved, both for senior citizens and for veterans. There is a one-page back sheet. If you need it, and if you'll be a communication partner, that would be very helpful. And we are going to be using that at a number of different venues just to promote that idea. Just to promote the idea of increasing those thresholds and increasing the income thresholds for seniors and veterans to stay in their home. Map of the Month is the 1948 flood. That 1948 flood was the event, the traumatic event that spurred the Hunter's Run Conservancy District Establishment. So that history is something that is important in those conversations now. So we provided that map and had a lot of people come in and request a copy of that particular map. We will have a call center on G26. That'll be in evening time for questions, answers relating to property taxes. The two interns we have this summer with GIS are hopeful that they are able to work on a couple of projects that will further mapping technology for a lot splits. So we're excited about their review and their new perspective in looking at this. Want to say thank you to Holly Maddie and Janet Stout. Both in the Record Center have agreed to be part of the place making efforts destination downtown of water plants. We need people to water plants to keep them healthy, and they agree to do that on a rotation schedule. BOR has concluded its formal hearings. Very excited about that, months and months ahead of previous practice. And that is savings, which we'd quantified at 26,000 annually just for actual costs, direct costs, but indirect costs about four times that. Attended the Farm Bureau breakfast, where solar was a major topic. But so were other things that have been discussed here over time. The incidents of bobcats in the area and when the natural resources leaders were here, they talked about that. And as well as food security and CAUV program. Enjoyed, spent some time with June Montport with the Wheel of Fortune thing that they have. And they are open to others participating in that at all different levels. The Decorative Arts Center has its new exhibit, went to that particular exhibit. And then this weekend, I'm happy to be part of the Heritage District's tour. On that tour, June 8th and 9th, and invite everybody to come. I think there is about 600 people expected to that.
Ooh. The only thing I have is I wanted to thank Evan and Josh Anders, my office there. Their center. Project that they built and. Boating docks in the back.
You want to take a shot at Rick, since he took a shot at you? Rick's head's on. There we go.
Sound like a shopping thing.
Yeah, just thanks for that help out there. They, they got us going. And then obviously, another major change you'll see out there is the water tower is nearly down. So that water tower had been up. Maybe for some of these projects Rick has removed that, that'll change the, kind of the look of the area a bit. But just a lot of, a lot of fun and interesting things going on. So stop on out, roof, the walls are up, can kind of see the space as it is now. Get a chance to talk about.
I'm going to quote you, expect those hangers to be built.
It's Tuesday. What do you think, thirsty?
Yeah. Soon.
Yeah, I, I actually asked me to get them on, onsite. I, I think we'll probably look at a year.
A year.
He's gonna hold your teeth up now.
I'm hoping that's up.
Stressed by six months, but that's good.
You're looking to buy a plane, sir.
Never know. Never know. Dan?
Just a few things that the IT department has going on right now. We've got one staff member being trained for our access control systems, as we have a number of facilities that make use of that. It'll be good to get, have someone on staff that's trained in that capacity. So thank you commissioners for, you know, the budget request specific to training of IT staff. Also, we're just working through some infrastructure replacements and upgrades. Some of those go great, smooth, others have bucks, but we're getting through it. And then, you know, one of the nature kind of projects that we have is adopting the transit department. So lots of preparations, lots of discussions. Thank you, Rick. Aaron's been great to work with, Kennedy. So we, you know, everything is kind of progressing as we near that July 1st date.
You know, it's kind of interesting about us now, we're taking on transit. Yeah, Lake County, when they got hacked here back a few years, there was some evidence that it came through one of the transit buses.
Great story to tell. We will. We will look to avoid that story.
I mean, something, you know, like that, if that were, but I got a pretty correct that, that information. And if that were to be true, then that's something to be aware of. Heather?
Let's share a JMSA poll they were recording. But my, very well timed event, largest attendance we've had since post-COVID. Very nice weather ended up being, nice crowd, I think lots of families. So I wanted to share that. And then also wanted to thank Commissioner President and Commissioner Oral for your assistance and guidance. Working very hard to make sure we appropriately spend your healthy aging rate funds. There's been, in that quick turnaround timeframe, a couple of agencies who have reached out and not feeling like they're going to be able to, as we've monitored their expenditures, expend their funds appropriately by June 30th, or have them been cumbered by that date. So I have worked with, wanted to thank, shout out to United Way, Hills on Wheels, and Fairfield County Health Department, who have agreed to take on some last minute additional funds and try to spend those by June 30th deadline and get those sub-grants.
Very good. Please rise if you're aiming to join me at the flag of the nation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan, a nation under God, with its own liberty and no doubt.
Michelle, any announcements?
There are no announcements.
Perpetual amendments for May 28, 2024.
Send out. Discussion.
King Admiral, call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Minutes passed three zero. From the Commissioners, Resolution 2024-6 dot four dot A. Resolution approving the appointment of Aaron Kennedy and an alternate to the Ohio Transportation Risk Full Board.
Commissioners, I move items A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Discussion.
Good. Thanks Jeff Porter for being the alternate.
Additional discussion.
Yeah, I want to touch on Aaron Kennedy. I, I won't go into a lot of detail, but I was in a meeting this past week of, of some import regarding transit. And a couple of questions came up during that meeting, and I just want to share Aaron's response to those questions and the immediacy of, of his actions and, and response to that meeting. That gets us off to a really impressive start in terms of how I think he handles himself and is intuitive and responsive in a way that I hope he continues to be. I'm really, really excited about him.
Very good. Additional discussion. Call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution 2024-6 dot four dot E. Resolution authorizing the execution of an engagement letter between Fairfield County and Bricker Grady LLP to provide counsel to the county next to with the tax increment financing program.
Commissioner Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, I move items E, F, and G.
Second.
Discussion. King Admiral, call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Facility, Resolution 2024-6 dot four dot H. A resolution authorized the approval of bid award for the airport hangar project.
Fairfield County Facilities, I move items H and I.
Second.
Discussion.
Just want to thank John and the Airport Board and my fellow commissioners and everyone else who's had a hand in getting us to this point. It's been a couple of years to, to get to the point where we can actually start building, but future of the airport is bright and it's exciting. So thank you, John.
Dan, Mr. President, I look forward to, I guess the ribbon cutting will be on June 4th. Mark calendars.
Of which year, Jeff? Just checking. Additional discussion.
If I may, just, you know, we talked about the economic development aspect of it. Well, so I was talking to an individual who's a CEO of an organization in Columbus, happens to live in Fairfield County. And one of the questions, I met with him to talk about stuff, was when are we going to build more hangars at the airport? Because he flies out of Sainsville and would love to have his plane at the Fairfield County Airport. And it's nice to be able to say we are building more hangars. They'll be ready on June 4th. Organization here, just the fact that somebody of that level, living in Fairfield County, wanting that identity and being here to be helpful in the future for things is great. So thank you.
Good. Initial discussion. Call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission. Resolution 2024-6 dot four dot J. A resolution to approve and award a bid to Nash Builders for the CDBG PY 2022 Village of Pleasantville Ballfield.
New Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, I move items J, K, and L.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Additional discussion. Call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Payment of bills, Resolution 2024-6 dot four dot M. A resolution authorized the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
Send out. Second.
Discussion. King Admiral, call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for June 11th and 9th.
Any additional items coming for the Board of Commissioners at this time?
Yeah, if I could ask a question, while we've been meeting, I, I know I and perhaps others received a, a message from RPC trying to discern the, what's that?
Good care of it.
Everything good?
Yep.
So I'm out.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other items? Looking for a little session to adjourn?
There.
All favors signify the same on.
Hi.